All right, we're live.
Oh, we're live.
Okay, this is the Anna Webster Planning Board meeting for February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, let's go around and take attendance.
Adam Mock.
Paul King.
Marlo Herrick.
Craig Fornier.
Susan Youngs.
Teresa Benmore.
Looks like we're all here. We have a quorum. And, um, site plan review, PBK's twenty-four dash zero one, Christopher Chesley proposed to have a car towing home business on map seven lot seventeen at one fifty-five Battle Street in the residential agriculture zone. This case is contingent upon the ZBA approval of a special exception on two thirteen. Did the ZBA, what did the ZBA do on two fifteen?
Well, they approved it. There's a letter in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they approved it with conditions.
Okay.
So the conditions were, no vehicles shall be parked in such a way with a look as to shine a light on the neighbor's property when started at night. No electric vehicles shall be towed to the property. No damaged vehicles shall be stored on the property overnight. The owner shall install fencing within one year. The owner shall expand the driveway to behind the house to use for the storage of the commercial towing vehicles. So those were the conditions.
Pretty stringent conditions. I mean.
So nothing out front?
So nothing out front, that's basically.
Okay, is there, is there anything else we should know here? I mean, do we have to approve this?
So you're here to discuss the driveway, the parking, the, what your concerns are, if you have any.
Lighting, signage.
Lighting, signage, driveway. So I think if you're expanding the driveway, I mean, I think Paul will have some input on that one.
That's state road too, right?
The state road, but, uh, he, I don't know if he's coming off the state road or if he's coming off of, uh.
Clough Sandburn. Looks like a state road.
Or a state road.
A federal.
Do you already have a driveway there?
Yes.
There's already a driveway on the state road, yes.
Yes. It's been adequate for everything it needed.
So you've got no plan to put one on Clough and Sandburn?
No.
I mean, the last time you applied, you thought you might want to put one there.
Yeah, I was, I was considering coming off the side just because I wanted to store vehicles out back and stuff, but I'm not going to be storing anything there.
Oh, that's good.
Just, just the vehicles that I, I have, uh, you count the pickup truck, three vehicles with signage on them. One of them right now is not running, so, but it'll be running by some time.
So if you pick up a car, where do you drop it off?
I have an agreement with Larry Turcot at Ajax Auto in Warner. I have a fenced-in compound up there. And I'm in talks with, uh, for another compound over in Henneker.
Okay. And you, can you store veh- like tow trucks over there?
I could, but when I need the tow trucks, I need them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be kind of.
So on police rotation or something, they want you there in twenty to thirty minutes. If I gotta drive twenty minutes to get the truck, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it sounds like from the, that the trucks would be behind the house.
That's where they're going to end up.
Yeah.
I have a year to get that set up there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, right now, of course, with the weather and the conditions and stuff, it's until the ground gets thawed and solid again.
Yeah. Is there anything here that, that, and the contingents from the ZBA that it, well, you, you probably were there, chatted that out with them. So you're, you're all in agreeance with what they had for contingents?
Right. I can tell you that. Yeah. Some of it was very simple. The neighbors just didn't like the lights in their eyes, including one that was out by the road, so I unplugged that yesterday. Yeah.
Is there going to be outdoor lighting?
I have one outdoor light on my shed.
Okay.
It's been there for years. It's, it's a dusk to dawn.
Nothing new?
No. Neighbors are all good, for the most part.
Probably not thrilled, some.
No, no, I, I don't think Tom and Chris are thrilled. They were the ones that, that had the, um, most to say, but it's.
Is that right across the street?
There, right across the street is, um, Dave's, Sam's. Sam, I think our name is. And then, but Tom and Chris are to the left of them as I'm looking at them. And so when I start the truck up, it has the daylight running lights, unless I pull the handbrake on. So when I don't have the handbrake on, or I turn the headlights on, runs directly across to Dave's house. But he's got a big white fence and he, and he says it really doesn't bother him. Um, Tom and Chris were getting the, um, the wash. And so they said they've had to install, um, curtains, dark curtains and such. But any way backing into the yard at any time, or leaving the yard at any time, going to the left or to the right, they're going to get whatever wash or headlights. Just because they sit right on the road.
And the backup signal too.
Say that again?
And the backup signal as well. You have a beep on it, right?
I do, but it's not really very loud, very obnoxious. I think it's half-dead.
Okay.
But it passed inspection.
That's the important part.
Yeah.
You said three, three trucks, is that, um?
So I, I have a pickup truck with, with the company logo on it. I have the Ram truck itself, which is my primary vehicle. I do have a twenty-ton wrecker that's in the yard right now. This ha- has a mechanical issue and an electrical issue. And at this point right now, um, for the repair costs, I put a new starter in it for some reason. That's not working either. So I have to do a little work on that. But eventually that will be out back. And, um, I'm not sure if I'm keeping that truck or getting a new one or what I'm doing with it.
Do you plan any expansion, like down the road, more vehicles, more trucks?
If I do that, it'll be through a different site.
Okay.
Right.
That's fair enough.
Yeah.
I mean, anytime you drive by your driveway, the neighbors across the road are, I mean, no matter what you're driving, they're going to get the light anyway.
And then the, the, the thing that Chris and Tom brought up is, they, on their side of the road, they actually sit down. On my side of the road, I actually sit up a little bit.
So it's.
Yes.
Right. And that's just, uh, planned, the terrain.
Yeah.
But the fence should help some of that.
Right.
The fence, the fence should help some of that.
Well, the fence won't be up front there. It's, um, the fence, as you're looking at the, the property, where the house is and the shed. That's basically a driveway right there where we park the, the vehicles. To the left is where the, um, tow trucks will go. But off of the end of the building, I have white fencing already. It just hasn't been put up. But I'll put the white fencing over that way and the trucks will be over on that side.
Sounds like you're trying to work with the neighbors.
As best I can. Um, if, if, there's not a whole lot of change. Um, there's really, I've been doing this for, since two thousand fifteen. And, um, the few issues that were brought up the other night have never been brought up to me. That was the first time I heard them. Um, and just, um, really nothing's changing, but now there's some requirements everybody's asking for. So it's not a big change. It's not a big deal. The fence I already had, I was going to put it up anyways. I started one time just misjudged on where the poles were supposed to be, so I had to pull them out again. And it sort of consumed the time that I was, had scheduled for that. So now I just have to reschedule time.
Will there be any kind of a sign up?
I haven't asked for one. I don't know if I want one or not. Part of the reason why I have my storage elsewhere, um, part of it, is one of the things I don't want is people coming to my house. I get enough calls right now saying, hey, did you tow my car? Where's my car? And, um, I don't want somebody angry thinking that I have their car coming to my house. I'd rather have them come to my storage lot. Yeah, so the signage, I've debated on putting it out because it's advertising for asking for it, because it is advertising. But at the same time, it's a location that will draw people in as customers. And I'm not sure I want them at the house.
That makes sense.
No, we could put in, in how restricted your signage?
You could. And then if I wanted it, I'll come and ask for it. Fair enough.
Yeah, that's right.
Right?
Yep. Is there any other comments, questions?
I don't think so. I think I, I like the idea perhaps of no sign unless, unless you ask for, just because it, it'll, having a sign would increase the attention of the cars threatened by it. And as you say, you don't want people showing up thinking they can get their car that way.
Right.
You do the towing, like, for, what, the police, for somebody?
Well, my goal is to get on the town's rotation. They won't accept me until I pass these boards.
Gotcha.
Okay. Um, I tow for, um, a roadside program called the Giro. They're the second largest roadside, um, provider to AAA. So it's the same stu- same type of dog as AAA.
Okay.
Right. And then there's some other ones that'll call me too. And, um, and then just individual, you know, ones that find me on the internet or ones that are recommended by the local garages or something to that effect.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And you're limited to automobiles, cars, trucks on that category? You don't, you don't do heavy, heavy trucks?
Well, with the big truck, I can do heavy trucks. But I, it's, it's been down since April. Um, the cab, it's, it's an old-style International, the old flat-nosed ones, they never did well up here in this climate. So, um, it had some rust underneath it, the cab mounts and the floor. I repaired it last year, but there was so much rust that what I had repaired broke free. And it won't pass inspection this year. I'm going to either replace the cab or with the mileage on it and the other mechanical issues, I'm considering just getting a whole new cabin chassis and having the crane put on that. So I'm in no rush right now at that, at this point. So, um, I, um, most of that stuff, when I do the bigger, the heavy stuff, it's usually a point A to point B thing. It's no storage in the yard or anything like that. Until I get with the state police, I probably won't be called for any accidents. No junk or anything like that, right? You won't be trucking junk? No. Okay. I, I tow, I, I move multiple, I move pretty much anything that my truck can handle. Right. I did a twenty-foot storage container yesterday. I've done some farm tractors. Right. And, um, today I did a two hundred thousand dollar electric, um, Audi. So, um, it's a wide variety of what I'm towing. So.
But they're not staying at the house overnight?
Right. No. No, the Audi went from the customer's house to the dealership.
So do we, what is the, um, most that you would have in the eye, towing vehicles?
Right now, what's there? The red, the red wrecker that's parked next to the shed, the Ram truck that I use on a daily basis in the pickup truck.
Those are your, your equipment. And I'm talking about somebody that you've towed in.
I don't there.
Thought he just said that, yeah.
He doesn't tow anything into the yard.
He says that he just takes it to the yard.
I, I have, I, I, I have storage up at Larry Turcot, Ajax Auto. That's where the towed stuff goes. I have a van sitting up right there right now that I had towed. It was an abandoned vehicle. And that's up there. That's where the towed stuff goes.
I was under the impression that we were here to approve you parking some vehicles in that yard, like overnight?
So I had, I, right, but in the discussion the other night, um, so go back to two ways. I had at one point considered that because of the police calls, dropping one in the yard. So say you get a pile up here on the hill. And I need, and I need to take two or three cars away because the police called me for it. It would be easier to go to my house and drop it. And then go up and get the next one and take that to wherever and come back and remove the one from my house. That was what I was looking at for set for dropping them. Um, but it's in the discussion at the, um, board the other night, um, that's not, nobody's in favor of that. They don't even like me taking a crashed vehicle and leaving it on the bed of the truck overnight in the yard. So, because it's, there are times when I will leave a vehicle on the bed of the truck. But as I said the other night, I was scheduled to go up to Lime, New Hampshire, beyond, uh, White River Junction there and tow a Mercedes down to Manchester after the meeting on Tuesday. And had that, that, that there was canceled by the customer. But normally I would have left the meeting, gone to there, and then I would have just left it on the bed of the truck. Because I'd be back at, into my, into this area around eleven, twelve o'clock. And then I would finish the tow in the morning. But I would leave it on the truck. And they, in the discussion on Tuesday, they don't want any of the wrecked vehicles left on the truck like that. So no, there won't be any offloading of the wrecked, wrecked vehicles.
Do we have to do anything formal?
Well, we have to approve the site plan.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Question? Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To accept the site plan and the ZBA's recommendations. How's this, how am I doing?
How about the signage, what?
Oh, yeah. We'd like to be notified if we decide, um, to want signage. And then have a discussion about that.
On second date, with no extra lighting and?
Yeah. Please be mindful of not extra lighting.
Well, that's already in the, you know, two nights ago. Any light, any, any additional lighting will be farther in the property and it'll be, um, I've got some battery-operated motion sensor lights that come on for thirty seconds and go off. They, they light up the area quite a bit, but I won't direct those across the street on.
Okay. That sounds good. Any further discussion? We take a vote? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Say aye.
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 All right.
Aye.
I, I said that, but you weren't looking at me, so.
Oh, sorry.
So I'll say it again. Aye.
Sounds good. Thank you all tonight.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chesley.
You're welcome. And I hope you have a good weekend. Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want some snow to make it ice. Says we might get two to four inches. Woo hoo. I want more snow. It's been such a disappointing winter.
Ten below zero would be real good.
Is it? It's still pretty soft there.
Yeah. It's like, it's the worst year I think I've ever seen in forty-two, thirty, forty years that I've been in the business.
Somebody's logging up on Little Hill behind the house.
Yeah.
Is that you?
Nope.
But I saw they had put out.
Mats.
Yeah, babe, so that they could get.
Yeah. I just did one on North Water Street and I had to put mats from the chipper, three bridges, mats all the way to the lips.
It's the yellow brick road.
It is. It was awesome.
Yeah, it wa- it is. And it looks, I, yeah. We just used them on a landing.
I think our second appointment didn't show up.
The trucks back off the road and they come out not muddy. It's like, this is the best.
What were we supposed to do with the Pillsbury Lake? I mean, I didn't see all of this.
They were coming to ask you to consider adopting some of their HOA rules into the zoning ordinance.
For the whole town?
Not for the whole town, just for the Pillsbury Lake district.
Oh.
Because when they dissolve their HOA, any of those rules that weren't the same rules that the town had in the ordinance, nobody's enforcing them. And the town isn't going to enforce them. Because they're not the town's rules.
Well, we're going to table that. We're not going to talk about it.
Right, that's cool.
Keep on keeping on?
I got looking at it.
They don't want to come talk about it?
That's, they're done.
All right.
Okay, number six, appointing.
Susan has light on that one. It seems like that property sold.
Well, the sign, the for-sale sign on it, I went today after I, I looked at the, the, um, agenda and I thought, oh, I wonder if it's sold. And I went down there and there's no sign anymore.
Yeah, are we talking about this?
Little Hill.
Yeah.
Whereabouts is this one?
You go, you know, you know, which is my house. You go past my house, past Matt Fallon. It's the next lot on the right, the one that goes in. It's not very deep this way, but then it goes down along the floodplain.
Okay.
And.
So it's the last lot on the right?
Yeah, before, before.
So this person called me and asked about it, if they could do a blueberry or Christmas tree farm. And I'm like, the town's agriculture residential, so you could. But if you were going to do a pick-your-own-blueberry or cut-your-own-Christmas-tree, you would need to talk to the planning board at some point to determine things like parking and that's about it. You know, your parking and your driveway. Because if you're going to have people coming in and out, we need to figure out how that would work on Little Hill Road. And that would be about being everything we would.
Yeah. And the mu- and the road, yeah, that part is dirt. And it's soft.
Yeah.
So there might have had to have been some sort of impact fee to upgrade the end of the road or something like that attached.
Is it, is it a town road?
It is a town road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But depending on the level of traffic, you know, the board could have decided to levy an impact fee just to upgrade the, the road a little bit to handle that increased traffic.
Because there is another house past me that's on the dirt section, but that hasn't been an issue. And the school bus goes onto that to turn around. In fact, they turn around and it will be these, the driveway for this lot.
Did I hear correctly, you say that this was selling?
Well.
It might have been. I haven't checked recently, but I've been kind of busy with getting everything ready for town meeting, so.
Do we?
Do we have in one?
Oh, it's more.
You might want to come.
Do we talk about the other option on that property or not?
Read what's on.
I don't know if he's, that person's the one who bought it.
Oh, yeah, where is all the?
A good way to waste a Saturday.
I mean, he said he had an offer, but.
I said to David, I said, you might as well come to this one. It's, you'll go and be interested.
Okay, so we're not going to do anything with number six. I think you've handled it correctly. Number seven, approval of draft minutes from last month.
Anybody find any typos or spelling?
Somebody did.
Spelling bee? Who's doing the spelling bee?
Oh, I do it every day.
Don't ask me to catch you spelling. I work with grandma.
On another committee I'm on, they said, oh, can we send you stuff so you can proofread?
I have my own way of spelling anyways, but a lot of people don't agree with me.
I spell phonetically, the way it should be.
I don't know who came up with Y phonos, P-H, not an S.
Well, that's because our language is a creole.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Greek, Latin.
It's like five different languages all put into one.
Okay.
I'm doing a quick, I'm bad. I don't, I forgot to read these before I came.
I thought we were going to have a pretty full meeting. That's why I didn't play. I did it right on my last page. Hey, it looks like it's something right. That's what I have to amend in the minutes I spelled your name on.
Who, me or mine?
Not you.
Oh, hers, yeah. Yeah, I was going to say.
I, I spelled like seven different ways.
That keeps things a little bit more.
One of them has to be right.
One of them will be right.
Well, that's true. It's different down there.
It's not his fault. It's the way you spell your last name.
I think I've done the last name second. Not that I'm not going to.
That was a short one.
I think I'm going to move to approve the draft minutes from the January eighteenth meeting.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. It's not out. No, I'm kidding.
Okay. Um, the other item?
Yeah. What? What? What, what? Adjourn. Oh, yes. I make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
I was like, oh my God, was I supposed to say something? Did I have something?
I was so good at it.
I know. I'm racking my brain.
Do we want to start talking about driveway regulations and zoning next meeting again? Because I did put it on this meeting because we.
But you thought we were going to be busy.
I thought we were going to be busy.
Yeah.
We were.
We'll discuss a little more driveway stuff next time, is what you're.
Yeah.
I, I looked at the, at the driveway up on Battle Street. Up here, there's a, it's kind of over the bank there down on, on the, as you're going up, it's on the left on the top of the hill there.
Oh, the one way, way down in the top, top of the hill up here?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's changed hands again?
Well, it's going to, because I think, I, I talked to, I think he's planning on selling it.
He's planning on selling it. He, what he wants, he found some flat land over in Loudon that's easier to develop than that.
Yeah. I mean, that's one place it should never have started to begin with.
Well.
Which, which spot is this?
So I brought, so I did a little research because I wanted to go back in time to figure out what was going on. And I pulled out the original driveway permit. So the select board approved the building permit on five seventeen, or five seventeen of twenty-one. And the driveway permit came in at the same time. And.
Where are we exactly?
The driveway permit was half-approved on five twenty-eight. You, you signed it, Paul, but Emmett never signed it.
Except by the law.
You wrote in the driveway permit that the grade should not exceed five percent. So you wrote that as a condition of the approval.
Say that again.
Paul wrote as a condition of the approval on the permit that the, it should not exceed five percent per fifty feet. That's right on the permit.
Where is this?
But Emmett never signed off on it, so it was never fully granted, the permit. So it seems like it's, it's just a weird situation. I brought the diagrams and the.
Yeah, one time Craig was involved in that one too.
Yeah.
Craig went up, looked at it with me.
Yeah. And Emmett, when it was supposed to come on Tuesday and look at it together with the owner, but he got busy and he couldn't come. So I looked at it with the owner on Tuesday. And, um, he's come up, he's come up with a new, a new plan.
A new plan. And I have the new plan with me.
He's got fifteen and a half percent grades, what he came up with.
Boy, he has a lot to go on.
I'm, I'm really, you know, I want, I haven't heard, I haven't talked with Emmett about it.
I wish I knew where he was.
Emmett said he was going to reach out to you because he came to my office today and asked me about it.
Where they clear, where they clear down the middle hole.
Yeah, yeah. Kind of like, kind of like you already got. And you called a lot.
And I said, yeah, Craig told me I was supposed to tell you something, but I forgot what it was.
Wood stack really nice. That next part. Okay. That's where I thought you were talking about, I wasn't.
Is it on the left? It should go up?
Left, yeah.
I'm, I'm inclined to deny it. I'm, I'm really inclined to deny it.
It's a, it's a steep hole down there.
Yep.
It's.
That was a lot of concern, a lot of concern over that with Emmett and the fire department.
Yeah.
He wasn't too awfully concerned because they could pack the fire trucks up on the flat.
Yeah, I remember that description.
But it, it's a long ways to haul, to haul the hose.
Yeah.
Or a body.
Or a body.
I, I was thinking that, but I wasn't going to say it.
Yeah.
I was thinking that too.
So if it's.
I mean, it hasn't come officially yet, right?
Well, he wants a driveway permit. And.
So has he, it, it, it's just because Emmett hadn't signed it, the reason it did not become, so it become official?
It wasn't official. It was Emmett signed it, right?
It's not a granted permit. It was Emmett signs it. So.
So we can deny, we can deny that plausibly, right?
Yeah.
Well, so.
It's not official.
That's, it's a state road. What will happen if the state, I mean, I, they're stepping right in and stepping on us yet.
Yep, you are.
And so where, where, where would that go after that?
I thought.
Because that state.
If the state approves it, we have no choice but to approve it.
Right. That is, that's where I think we're going to have a.
Yeah, we're going to have a problem.
Do they?
And that's where, that's where the Cannon Warren got opened up a few meetings ago when we did what we, what we did for the state driveways.
And, and I have, I have a little bit of a, I have a little bit of an issue. I, I understand everybody's concern, and I get that. But again, I feel like we live in New Hampshire. There's plenty of, plenty of, I mean, we could go through this town right now, that roads are just as steep as that's going to be.
Oh, yeah.
And people live there every day. And I just, I don't know. I, I get a little bit, um, I, I think we're being a little too restriction. We're, we're so restricted on driveway permits. And go ahead and build a Taj Mahal if you want, because we don't have any rules on that. So the way you stop them is on their driveway.
I think that one right there though is, I mean.
Is the state?
It's going, it's going right in a fifty-foot hole.
Right. Is the state likely to approve a driveway permit on a spot like that?
Probably, that lot can't be more than two hundred feet wide.
So is he going to put, is, would that, would, do we, do we, do we require, um, you know, do we say, get, get an engineer, like an engineer?
Yeah.
Plan and to require fill to be bonded? I mean, how many times have we all brought fill in?
Do we want to off the thing if we're adjourned?
You've got to see this.
I mean, you're discussing things.
It's not that I, I mean, it's like it's.
We're not really adjourned. You're still having a meeting.
Well, I know one guy that started to haul fill there and he gave up.
Because it wasn't that much fun.
No, I mean, if you were going to put a concrete wall and have it so, solid, it's thirty feet.
Yeah. No, you're right. I, I know what you're talking, yeah.
I mean, that thing drops right off the road, thirty feet, easy, easy thirty feet and then. You know, to solid ground.
Would the state approve that?
State already approved it.
Well, they, they don't. All they're, all they're interested in this, that, that's all they care about.
They granted it, Strive, well, it was granted in twenty twenty, it was driveway permit two, four, seventy-three, da, fifteen for Mark and Kimberly Durgan, so they've already granted it once in the past.
I'm, I'm, I'm searching here for a little direction. I mean, we haven't, certainly haven't talked to Emmett about, I mean, he's got what is two cents in this.
I mean, I, if you're bringing up the concern of the steepness, I mean, the steepness needs to be addressed before the permit can be granted. If it's a legitimate, I mean, that's my opinion, and maybe I shouldn't have one, but I think.
You should have a plan.
But if there's a light safety issue.
Well, I did, yeah, I mean, I don't mind, because I know there was a, there was a job that we actually, I have a relative that his brother built right on the side of the hill, right in Newfoundland, right?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, it just got, had enough room to get his cars off and, you know, then he had his concrete wall for his house, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So there is certain things you can do.
Right, to make.
To, to make it so that you could have, you know, to get your car off and there's your house on the road, you know what I mean?
Well, he, in the original application, not the current owner, but the previous owner, they did have an engineer come up with a diagram. And it shows the house and there's a. There's a footing, I think it was a four foot footing and then it has a basement. And then the top of the, so let's say basement's eight feet, footing four feet, you got twelve feet coming up. And it shows the road coming in at that level.
At twelve feet?
At twelve, what does a lot fill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or it could be like we were just saying, you could, you know, you know how you could, you could go to a garage right in off the.
Anything is doable, but.
Yeah, I, so, but I guess we would wanna see.
They do it.
But the house has to be setback, right?
Off the road.
They can't build it right on the road.
The closest they can get into the road is twenty-five feet if they went to the ZBA.
It, it is setback enough.
Oh yeah.
It's set, it's down in the hole, as he says, it's down in the hole.
It's thirty foot drop.
Yeah.
Any way you look at it, it's, you're going right straight down thirty feet and you could dump ten wheel load after ten wheel load.
It would take it off a lot.
Is that where we'll see a sign Phil wanted?
So, so I would think that probably he should have a, a, a plan, an engineered plan so we could visually see what.
What they wanna do.
What they wanted, what they have for, I, an idea.
Is there?
Engineered.
We require that plan for one on just the road.
Yeah.
And we've got the, we are.
I do too, I believe that.
It's in the building permit.
Yeah.
Well, that way we're not, we're not proving something that's totally unsafe in a sense, so.
But there is a plan, he was planning to develop the same thing that the original owners were planning to develop. So what if it's the same original engineered plan?
Because the state has approved it, so I don't believe legally you can not approve it.
Well, we, we can request a plan.
Yes, you can have, yeah, you have to have.
Right? Can always ask.
You can have that, yeah, you can make anything you want, but I say you cannot disapprove it.
Well, that's all.
I don't believe you can, because the state has approved it.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're.
So, but you can make restrictions that they have to follow.
And what would the restrictions?
Well, whatever the plan says.
Is there a, is there a time limit on a state approved plan?
That would be one of the.
I mean, do they expire like ours do if you don't build it without a certain?
Have an engineer come in and make up the drawing, so you'll know exactly what he's gonna be doing.
And the next thing is. How are they gonna put a septic system in and get stone down there or whatever?
He just took over the same plan like he lived, he just put his name on the original, on their driveway permit.
And.
So he just redid the driveway permit.
We don't have a copy of that, right?
His. We do have, right?
No, no, in ours.
But we haven't got it, no.
Because I didn't know we'd be talking about this tonight until just maybe twenty minutes.
Yeah, um, his plan that he showed.
Could I see?
Yeah, you can.
Not that I know.
As you come in the driveway, he's gonna have a septic up high, he's gonna have to pump.
He's gonna have to pump up.
Where, whereabouts well? Where's that going?
I think, I think it's over.
So he's basically gonna utilize the whole top of that septic and well in a driveway.
Well, the driveway. The plan that I saw, the driveway goes in and then it angles down to the house. And he claimed to, it's a three and a half percent, thirteen and a half percent.
Yeah.
Watch it up.
I know where it is and uh.
You look, yeah, you look down.
I mean, I've looked at that one as I drive that way and I go, somebody's really thinking of building there? It just looks impossible.
Yeah.
Never think anything impossible.
It's one thing if they could build right on the road, right.
I'm, I'm thinking, here's what I'm thinking. Absent Emmett's in there. Is we require them to have a engineered road. I'm, I'm particularly interested in the road, I'm not so interested in the house or anything.
Yeah.
And we require.
We have a septic.
And we require grade or admin.
So there is a plan, but it's from a previous owner, so once again, this owner was just, he bought.
Enough room to put the well on top of that.
He bought the property because they already have building.
He's gonna have a certain radius around there.
Yeah.
The need is enough room.
The bulge shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah.
If you look at that plan, you'll see there's not, he's got a circle ass radius for the well protection. And the septic system is gonna be what?
Far away from the well.
Far away from the well.
But I, I can't imagine DES.
Seventy-five feet from the well.
Yeah, there's his, there's his septic.
I can't imagine DES or a lot of well that close to the road.
Here's the, there's the Battle Street.
It's assault on one side.
He's going in.
And there's the garage.
Well, it comes to the level of his, the top of his basement, it's basically the level of his home is where the thing, and a septic is over here and he's gonna have to pump up the thing.
But where's the well?
I think the well is.
Water line, protective well radius, that's what this is.
Okay, so there's his well right there.
Oh, okay.
We had, we had a place to, but we had to pump it.
Hmm, yeah, that's not, the pumping's not, everybody, that's, happens, it's not the end of the world, the pump part of it. I would think that.
Ninety feet long driveway.
And then when you stop, really think about this, right on the very shop corner of Boss going where they built that duplex house. When they put that in there, that dropped equal and looking at that, it doesn't look that bad. And they, but they hauled a lot of bill, yeah.
Were you, were you talking right at the corner?
On the shop corner of Boss going on water, that new house there.
Yeah, yeah.
And when they put that in there, it's like I thought that was gonna be.
There's current grade.
I mean, it was just quagmires instead of.
Yeah, true, yeah, but.
And you look at the end of the porch, you can see that thing looks like it's dropped two inches on the end of it, so. I would suspect probably that wall's cracking. But whatever, that's, that's their problem.
He started his grade right at that well. All right, I think we got it.
Well, until we get, uh. We haven't, I mean, this hasn't been officially put on our agenda yet, has it? Till, till it's actually on our agenda.
Well. Well.
Oh, is that, oh, that goes with this.
This is the original.
I was, I brought the original.
This is the original. No more than five percent pitch for fifty feet, this is what Paul said here, he signed this in twenty-one. And I'm, I'm good with that, we'll keep that, I'm sure.
Apparently, uh, Emmett, well, that was, that was the time during COVID where Emmett and I were going out separately and Emmett may never have found time to go out and talk, or he did and didn't. Get a chance to sign it or whatever, but I don't know, I don't know what his feelings are, but I know I talked to him and he said that he had no problem with the fire department because they could park up on the hill and bring the hoses down in.
Well, I'm talking.
Which order you want some?